I'd like to call it order the regular council meeting for the city of Springdale for February 19th. If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance and please remain standing for the invocation.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God of power and might, guide us to do justice, love kindness, and walk humbly with you. As we celebrate Black History Month with our offerings, we remember our history of injustice and violence, so that we might continue to build a future of justice and peace. God, help us to value diversity beyond variety. Help us value diversity with a vision for progressive future that acknowledges our strength together, as well as the power, creativity, ideas, and part that we all bring when we all are welcome to the table. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Spott, if you could take role?
Mr. Gleves?
Present.
Mr. Jacobs?
Present.
Ms. McFarland?
Present.
Mrs. Sullivan-Maisкуп?
Present.
Mr. Vanover? Mrs. Webster?
Present.
Mr. Anderson?
Present. Mr. Vanover advised us that he was under the weather and would not be attending tonight. All right, next we'll move on to minutes. Council, in your packets, you receive the minutes for February 5th, 2025. If there are... What is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved in second. Any questions, discussion, or changes? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as published signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The minutes are approved with six affirmative votes. All right, moving on our agenda. Next up, we have a special guest tonight, a presentation from Hamilton County Auditor Jessica Miranda. Ms. Miranda, if you'd like to come forward, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, and good evening, esteemed members of the Springdale City Council. It's very, very good to see you since last I was here, serving as your state rep. It's been a little less than a year now that I have moved over to the Hamilton County Auditor's office, and we thought it would be appropriate for me to go on somewhat of a countywide tour. We're going around to as many municipalities that will have us, so that we can give you this presentation that we've put together to help everyone understand what the auditor's office does, what we do not do, and what we are here to help you with as a city. So while the presentation is coming up, I will just say that you are the second municipality that we have visited since we began. We went to the Village of Lincoln Heights first, and we're here in the great city of Springdale for our second presentation, so thank you for having us. I, of course, am Jessica Miranda, your Hamilton County Auditor. I've also brought some amazing staff members with me. I have Amy Humphrey, who is our chief deputy auditor in the auditor's office, and behind her, we have Tim Steiner, who is our supervisor in our Budget and Settlement Finance Department. So if you have any specific questions to the accounts payable and accounts receivable, that is why Tim is here, so he can answer all of those for you. Most of you here know who I am because I served you, the city of Springdale, and all of its residents in the State House for five and a half years. I was very, very honored and privileged to have that opportunity to do so, and I gained a lot of knowledge, serving in the State House, regarding the state's biennium budget and how that affects things like your local government funding, as well as school funding, because I know one of the most popular topics all of last year, and kind of a little bit rolling over into this year, was property taxes, right? And how those have gone up across the entire county, less so out here in the other two-thirds, more so within the city of Cincinnati proper. So that is why we've developed this presentation and wanted to make sure that we get it out to the masses of the county, so that folks understand while the auditor's office does value all real property within the county, we are not setting your property tax amounts. Property tax amounts are set by both the state and, as you all know, your local municipality, as well as any levies that have been passed within your area as well. So before I served in the State House for you, I was on the Wenton Woods City School Board and gained a wealth of knowledge in our unconstitutional school funding problem we find ourselves in here in this great state of Ohio. And if you go to the auditor's website, we'll talk about this in the slides, but we have a beautiful pie chart on everyone's property in the county. You can search up your property anytime and see where every cent of your tax dollars are going. And you'll notice, first and foremost, that most of your property tax dollars goes to our schools. Why? Because our school funding formula is too overbearing or too over-reliant upon property tax dollars versus what the state should be putting in in the biennium budget with our state tax dollars. So on that first slide, by the way, what you have in front of you, we've given you a packet tonight. You have my PowerPoint presentation condensed down into some pages for you. You also have my business card, so that you have my contact information. You have my Public Affairs Director's contact information as well. And then you have our brochure that is a more condensed version of what I'll be presenting on tonight to you all. And if it's okay, since you have it in front of you, I know the public cannot see it on the screen yet, but I'm gonna go ahead and get into the presentation. That way I don't take up too much time. Is that okay?
If that's all right, if you'd rather, I mean, we could come back. If you'd rather have the slides up there, we can give Brian a few minutes and do committee reports, or you can continue. I'm happy either way. If you want to continue, it's fine.
Whatever you would like, whatever's best for you.
Why don't you keep going? We have the slides, and they're available if anyone wants to request them from the city, and then they should be up on the screen shortly.
Perfect. So I'm gonna skip over to slide number three, since I've talked enough about myself, and I'm gonna talk to you about what the auditor's office responsibilities are. So as you can see on this slide, we are the chief financial officer for the county. What that means is every dollar that your county government spends goes in and out of our office, and we are making sure that not only is every dollar accountable to the public and to every Hamilton County resident, but it is also transparent as well. And there is a ton of information, ton of reports, ton of spreadsheets that you can find on our website that shows you those dollars moving through our office and where they're coming from and where they're going. Other than that, we are the real property assessor. I mentioned this briefly, but there are about 350,000 parcels in our county. We assess the value of every property, whether it's residential, commercial, or industrial, and we do this every year, every three years, and every six years is our county's mass appraisal. And just so you know, there's 88 counties in our state. Not all of them are doing mass appraisals at the same time. It's kind of on a different schedule, so that every county is not doing that at the same time. So we just did ours in 2023, our surrounding counties, Butler, Claremont, Warren. Warren County's going through theirs right now. It's staggered. We also run and operate the county's Board of Revision process. So if you don't like the value that your home has been valued or assessed, we have a program for that, to file a complaint and bring in your own evidence for what you think your opinion of value is, to try to change that. There's a whole section on our website that has more information for the Board of Revision, and we actually just shot a couple videos as well, because we're trying this new thing out to try to get the information to everyone the way they like to see it, right? So for the first time in history, your county auditor's office has social media pages that we just opened up. So you can find us on LinkedIn, Facebook, and Instagram. And we've shot videos to put up on our website to see if that information is more palpable to certain residents as well. And we're trying the best we can to get the valid information out to people so that they're equipped with all of the knowledge they need. We are also one leg of the County Budget Commission. Just like the Board of Revision, there are three county-elected officials that sit on these bodies. The Budget Commission is myself as the auditor, the treasurer of Hamilton County, and the county prosecutor. We do the administration of a few programs that are in this presentation and probably the most important piece of what I want to share with you all tonight, which is the Homestead Exemption Program, the Owner Occupancy Credits, and then the Rental Registration Program. Now, I'm not sure if the city of Springdale has its own rental registration. You do? Okay.
We have a registry. It's voluntary for rental properties, and we provide inspections for those to give comfort to people who might be coming into the city that their rentals do.
That's great. More and more, we're learning that municipalities, whether it's a village, a township, or a city, are doing their own rental registration programs, because it helps you all know and understand who the landlords are and to be able to better service your residents, so I applaud that. You should know that your Hamilton County Auditor is the statutory agent for that, so please make sure if they're filing here, that you're also sending them to us, so they can file with us as well. So I'll go into those three programs a little later on. Something fun that we also do in the county auditor's office is the dog licensing program. So a lot of people may not know this, but it is state law. If you have a dog, it must be licensed here in the state of Ohio, and we take care of that in the auditor's office. And it is actually fully automated now. You can renew and purchase a dog license on our website and pay for it there. So please let everyone know, and Springdale residents listening tonight, please know that if your dog isn't already licensed, you can do that. Unfortunately, we're past the January 31st deadline for this year, so you'll get a little late fee from the state of Ohio. But please license your dogs. It is legal, and it is the right thing to do. So in the event that they get lost, we can find out who they go back to. We have a consumer protection arm of the auditor's office as well, which is called our Weights and Measures Department. If you've ever went and pumped gas in Hamilton County, you'll see our seal on the gas pumps. That means our team was there and making sure that the gallon that you are getting in your car is actually the gallon that you are paying for and that it is priced correctly. I'll put a small plug in for fuel testing. Ohio is one of three states that does not test our fuel. We fought very, very hard at the State House, time and time again, to try to pass that law so that we could be a state that joins the rest of the country and tests our fuel so that we know the quality of what we're putting into our car. And unfortunately, it hasn't passed yet. So if that's something you care about and that you're passionate about, please tell your state lawmakers that we need that here in Ohio. The auditor's offices would be glad to help in this effort. And then there is, of course, a complaint form on our website as well. If you or someone you know goes and pumps gas and does unfortunately get a bad batch and something happens to their car, you can report that to us, and we will take the steps necessary to make sure that that station is put back in tip-top shape. And then, of course, we have several other duties assigned by statute to us. We often joke in the auditor's office that back when county government was created and they were thinking of all of the things to give county auditors to do, they had a bucket of things that didn't really go anywhere else, and they said, "Here you go. The county auditor can take on all of these responsibilities." But we do it gladly, and we're honored to serve the community in all of those ways. So that next slide says, "We serve the community, but we, of course, do not do it all. We do not collect property taxes or set property taxes, as I mentioned earlier. That's the county treasurer who collects those. We don't manage deeds. That is the county recorder. We do not provide surveys and maps. That is the county engineer. And, of course, we do not make abatement policy. That is the folks here before me today. Every city, state, or city, township, and village has their own policies that they make and manage and vote on." And then, page five, moving along here in our presentation. This is just to further reiterate that the auditor's office works in values, not taxes. So property value is, of course, a part of the formula for calculating your property taxes, but it is not the only variable. I've already mentioned a few other things like abatement policies, levies, school funding, et cetera, that goes into that. But, for example, if your property value goes down 5%, it doesn't necessarily mean your tax liability goes down 5%. This fluctuates depending on what municipality you live in and what levies have been voted on and approved in that respective area. And on slide, let's see what number I'm on, six here. We have provided for you a three-area comparison, just to kind of prove this point about values versus taxes. If you look here, we have provided a parcel, a residential property, that has the same value. So by all accounts, is valued the same, around $236,000 and some change. But depending on where that person lives, their tax liability is going to be different. The three examples we have provided you is the city of Cincinnati, Green Township, and the city of Sharonville. Oh, look, we're up and running. Thank you.
I apologize again for the technical issues. We're in business now.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Click it along. All right. Perfect. I get control of the remote even. Love this.
I might have another remote here. I can override if I need to.
All right. So here's the three-area comparison. That first green line is what we're drawing your attention to here, which is the parcel value. So each home in these three areas are valued about the same, $236,000 and some change. But you can see, because of a myriad of things, but mostly the tax levies and the tax rate of those municipalities, the tax liability is going to be different for every one of those locations. So for this parcel value of $236,000 in the city of Cincinnati, you're going to be paying a property tax rate of a little over $5,000. If you move over to the next column and look at Green Township, that same parcel value is a property tax liability of a little over $4,000. And then if we move over to your neighboring city, the city of Sharonville, you'll see that in Sharonville, that parcel value is a tax liability of a little over $3,000. So very, very different in each municipality across the county. And this is the important information, one of the most important pieces of information in this presentation that we're trying to travel the county with, to educate folks on the fact that it's not just your property value that's driving that property tax liability. And it's very, very different in each type of municipality. So talking about real estate and reappraisals, Ohio law, of course, dictates their cycles. We are a creature of statute as a county auditor, therefore we have to follow Ohio law and Ohio statute. I mentioned this a little bit earlier, but we are in three- and six-year cycles, but we're looking at properties every year. So every three years, that's called our triennial valuation of properties. This is kind of like a desktop review of properties, if you will. No physical viewing. It's just an updating for real estate sales and things like that. And then every six years, we are required to do what is called a mass appraisal, which is the entire county, 350,000 or so parcels, all at one time, get valued under our purview in the auditor's office. As you could imagine, that is a huge project, a lot of work, and we rely heavily on our licensed real estate appraisers in the auditor's office, on our staff who do a phenomenal job getting this done every three and six years. Mentioning our website again, hamiltoncountyauditor.org. I'm sure a lot of you on the dais and in the audience have been to our website once or twice, if not more. But we have a plethora of information available on our website. This is the Board of Revision page. Soon, there will be some videos that will pop up as soon as you hit this page, and we have revamped this page very much so this year to provide more information in a more aesthetic or helpful way, with dropdown menus, questions and answers, what evidence is, and what you should be bringing into the Board of Revision if you decide to file your own complaint. Moving on to the property summary function. Does everyone know that you can visit our website and click on Property Summary, and every piece of real estate is available for view in the county? Okay, good. This is the gold standard, if you will, for county auditor's websites. I don't know that there is another county auditor's website that is as great as ours in the entire state, and I will say that confidently and stand up here and say that we are the gold standard. But if you are a property owner, a homeowner, a landlord, or anything in between, if you work in the real estate business, every property in our county is available for viewing. And this has tons of information. You can see previous sales. You can see the value history, the many different reappraisals that have happened, and you can see that wonderful pie chart. It's a beautiful, colorful pie chart that will show you where every penny of your tax dollars are going. And this is our commitment to being not only transparent, but accountable to all of Hamilton County's residents and taxpayers. And this will be my last school funding plug, I promise. But please help me help you in contacting your state lawmakers and telling them how very important school funding is here in Ohio. Phase three of the school funding plan has not been funded yet, meaning school funding is not finished. It started out as being called the Cup-Patterson Plan, which was a bipartisan school funding plan to try to make our school funding here in the state of Ohio constitutional. It's not finished yet, unfortunately. And this is why you'll always see that pie graph. The biggest chunk of your tax dollars from your property taxes is going to your school district, because the state is not putting in what they should be putting in. So I promise that'll be my last school funding plug of the night. Okay, now, getting into the programs that we administer in our office. The most important one being the Homestead Exemption. A lot of you may have heard of this before. A decade ago, the Homestead Exemption used to be worth a lot more to a property owner. Unfortunately, it has not been indexed for inflation, and it has been restricted such that an income qualifier has been placed on it. It used to be, if you were 65 years and older, you automatically got the Homestead Exemption. It was only based on age, which was great for our senior citizens, because those who lived on a fixed income need this exemption more than most people. And unfortunately, when Governor Kasich took office, he put in a income requirement. And so now your gross income has to be less than $38,600 to be able to qualify for this exemption. As you can imagine, that is not a very helpful number for our elderly Ohioans here in the state of Ohio. And when I was in the State House, we worked really hard to try and fix this. We had something called House Bill 60 and no less than 10 other pieces of legislation to try to tackle the property tax issue here in Ohio. Unfortunately, none of those bills have been given the legislative process that they deserve. But much like with school funding and the other plugs I've made tonight to contact your state lawmakers, please, please, please contact your state senator and your state rep and let them know how important this program is to your residents here in the city of Springdale and ask that they not only index this for inflation, so that it becomes more efficient and effective for homeowners, but so that we can finally start putting money back in the pockets of our senior citizens here in Ohio. Okay, the Homestead Exemption, common questions. Will I still pay property taxes if I'm receiving the Homestead Exemption? Yes, but your taxes will be reduced. The reduction is equal to the taxes that would otherwise be charged, up to $26,200 of the market value of your home. So it is giving homeowners something. It's just not giving them what it could be had it been indexed for inflation and not based on an income. And then, what happens if I file late? Late filers for tax year 2023 will be eligible for that year only if their income for the previous year was less than $36,100. So we get a lot of questions in the auditor's office on what happens if they file late. They will still be eligible, and they will still receive it as long as that income guideline is met. Going back to that property search function on our website, everyone in the county who owns a property can pull up their property on our website and see if they are already getting the Homestead Exemption or not. It will say yes or no right next to it, and they can also see if they're getting the next one that we're gonna talk about, which is the Owner Occupancy Credit. So I won't read this word for word to you, because I've kind of said it quickly already. But the Homestead Exemption, where is it now? It's not where it could be, right? We have the opportunity here in Ohio to make this better for our property owners, especially those living on a fixed income and our senior citizens. But unfortunately, in 2014, Governor Kasich reinstated those income restrictions, which greatly limits the reach that this program could have. I think I have one more. Uh-oh, my clicker tools. My clicker capabilities have been taken away from me.
You're back. You just lost focus when it had to pop up. You're fine.
So a little bit more about the Homestead. What does this mean for our county? In 2014, the average value of that exemption here in our county was about $565, meaning our homeowners were saving that chunk of change on their property tax bill with a home value of $155. Fast forward here, 10 years later, to 2024. The severely weakened program provided just $607 on average, which is only a 7% increase, despite property values going up almost 70%. So again, when I say this program hasn't been indexed for inflation, this graphic here is exactly what I mean. It's not keeping up how it could be for our residents and our homeowners. Okay, why is it important? I don't think I have to tell you all why it's important to help people on a fixed income and certainly our senior citizens here in the city of Springdale. There is a wonderful market, a wonderful stock or inventory, if you will, for senior citizens, even for first-time homebuyers here in the city of Springdale. And I feel like I can speak a little bit about how I know about this, because I represented you for five and a half years in the State House. So I know a little something about the city of Springdale. But Springdale is a lot like Forest Park and Sharonville, the cities to your left and right. We have ranch-style homes. We have three-story homes. We have condos, apartments, and everything in between. We have the flexibility for someone to not only purchase their first home within the city of Springdale, but they can move up once they outgrow their home in the city of Springdale, and they can downsize in the city of Springdale. And another fortunate thing we have here in the city of Springdale, of course, as you all know, is one of the greatest senior citizen living facilities in Maple Knoll, right? So our residents can stay here. They can stay here throughout the entirety of their life. But what is not helping is the fact that these exemptions that we get from the state are not keeping up with them living their lives within the city of Springdale and Hamilton County. So these bullet points are just simply outlining why it is important to keep our elderly Ohioans in their home, in our cities, in our townships, in our villages, and why this Homestead Exemption comes in handy to do that. One could argue the Homestead Exemption is one of the most important things to allow folks who are living on fixed incomes to stay in their homes and grow old in their properties. So again, how can you help me? How can I help you? Our County Auditors Association here in the state of Ohio, this is our number-one thing that we advocate for at the State House level. We go and we talk to our state-elected officials on why this is so important, why folks need this. And I could use your help in that effort. If you could contact them, let them know how important this is. And it's ohiohouse.gov for your house rep and ohio senate.gov for your state senator, to look up who they are and to reach out to them. All right, I'm gonna put the clicker down. And then, one thing I just wanted to share with you that we have done since I took office here for the Hamilton County Auditor is we have slashed the PACE program fee in half. If any of you are familiar with the PACE program, it stands for Property Assessed Clean Energy. Those of you who are familiar with your wonderful school district, Princeton, would know that this is... We called this the LEED program when we built our new schools over in Wenton Woods, and I'm sure they did the same here in Princeton. But this is a way to get your building or your property certified where it is efficient and matches clean energy and green energy standards. A lot of developers are using this type of financing here in our county. And it was brought to my attention when I first took office that the 3% fee that we were charging in the auditor's office to do these types of projects were creating a barrier for developers. It was said to us that they were going to other counties to do their developments, because our fees were simply too high. So what we did in the auditor's office, and by the way, this is a shared fee between the auditor and the treasurer. So the treasurer and I got together and said, "Okay, well, let's cut this fee in half. We love green energy. We love clean energy, and we want to see buildings and properties here in our county match those standards." So we've cut this in half. So if you have any developers, perhaps ones that have bought something like the Tri-County Mall, I don't know, maybe that big project, that are interested in this type of funding for their development, let them know about this, and they can reach out to our office to get this started and file their paperwork with us. This is a great program that the state offers that is good for everyone in our communities. And you can head to the next one. All right, owner occupancy program, or credit I should say, is simply as it says in the title. If you own and live in your home, you receive a credit on your property tax bill. Just like the homestead exemption, you can check this on your property summary page on our website. It will say yes or no next to it. If you find that you are not receiving the owner occupancy credit, please reach out to our office. It's a simple paper that they have to fill out. Our office will get that to them and make sure that everyone that needs this and that is living in their home gets the credit that they are due to receive. Another savings program, if you will, to try to help with the property tax liability. All right. And that is it, folks. I tried to keep it as short and sweet as possible because I know we have some winter weather rolling in, but I wanted you to be equipped with the information that we have at our disposal so that you know what you have at your disposal for your residents here in the city of Springdale. And you have my card. I am just a call, click, some of you have my cell text away, so if you ever need anything, please do not hesitate to reach out. We take that very, very seriously in the Hamilton County Auditor's Office. Everyone that reaches out gets an answer, and we will make sure that the residents of Springdale are taken care of for whatever their needs may be. Any questions?
Let's see. While people are thinking of questions, I do want to thank you for coming out and speaking to us about what's going on. I can tell you, I know the PACE program is something we've used in Springdale before, developers on Route 4 corridor, we've sponsored applications in the past for them, and I'm glad that you're advertising that green energy program because it is something developers can use to make it more attractive. And I can tell you, I was just on your site the other day while I was doing my taxes on the property search so I could look up how much property tax I paid last year, and I knew right where to go because I go there every year to check, so I'm an expert. But thank you for maintaining that. I do love the property search, I'm one of those people. There's a couple of questions for you. Mayor Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you again for coming out. We really appreciate that, and it's a wonderful presentation to give us as well as all of our residents. Quick question, you had referenced several times with regard to what the state legislations have been doing in terms of school funding, and being in a city that's part of a greater community with regard to the Princeton District that's going through a levy, do you believe that if the state legislature were to make some alterations or changes with regard to school funding, that would eliminate the need for levies for places like Princeton?
Yes, thank you for that question, Mayor. And just, I know I probably have said this at nauseam, but just to reiterate, we came up with a plan, and when I say "we," it was a bipartisan team of lawmakers. One lawmaker, who was former Speaker Cup, the original half of the Cup Patterson School Funding Formula, was a member of the Supreme Court when the Ohio School Funding Formula was deemed unconstitutional. So, he took it upon himself to go to the legislature and try to fix it. Lucky for him, he partnered with a teacher and former Rep. John Patterson, and a lot of us toured the entire state and got to work talking to superintendents, teachers, cities, villages, everyone in between to figure out what fair school funding would look like here in the state of Ohio. We worked really, really hard. We passed it in two biennium budgets, two phases of it. The third phase is still out there. I am, I don't know if hopeful is the word I want to use, but I am encouraging my former colleagues in the State House to ensure that that third piece of the formula is in the biennium budget, which, as you know, they're working on now. I'm afraid without that, we're never going to get to a place in our state where school funding is deemed constitutional. In fact, even with the first two phases, we've moved backwards. I saw a stat the other day that said we were like 47% to being funded constitutionally, right? Meaning, that's how close the state was to having constitutional funding if they put the right amount into the budget and funded their constitutional duty, which is our schools. We have slid back, and it's now at 39 or 37%. So, why is that? Because while we were working on school funding, fair school funding, or constitutional funding formula, I know it's a mouthful, but however you want to call it, I refer to it as fair school funding, while we were doing that, there was also some concessions made in the state budget for universal vouchers. And as all of you know, who work closely with your school district, the Princeton City School District, vouchers hurt public education. It takes our hard-earned tax dollars out of that functioning school system and diverts it elsewhere. In essence, it's a defunding mechanism for our public schools. And that is the crisis we find ourselves in, in our great state of Ohio. It's happening in a lot of places across the nation. Texas is dealing with this, Kansas has dealt with this, Florida is dealing with this, and the problem I have with universal vouchers is not the choice of education. Every family should have a choice of where they want to send their kids. The problem is that they are not accountable and they are not transparent to the public. They are not rated the same way that our public schools are, and we have no idea what their educators are being paid because it's not transparent. So, I think we need to take a hard look at what our constitutional responsibility is here in Ohio, and that is to fund in a constitutional way, school funding, and we have to start putting our money where our mouth is and fund the most important thing in our state, which is our future, our children, and therefore our educators and our educating systems. So, we are, I know this is a long-winded answer to your question, Mayor, but we are in quite a crisis in Ohio with what we're funding, and you can clearly see if you pull up any property in the county, the majority of property taxes are going to their school systems. That's because the school board has had to make critical and difficult decisions because they're not getting enough from the state, meanwhile, their money's being diverted elsewhere, and they need more funds to educate children. Their only option is to run a levy and ask their property owners to invest more into a system that is being assaulted, right? A funding mechanism that's being assaulted. So, I'd say it's one of the most important things to talk to your state lawmakers about because we cannot afford that burden to continually be on the property owners in any of our counties across the state.
Really appreciate that answer, and it's something that's helpful for our residents and not just our residents, but everybody in the Princeton District that may not know the reason for levies, the reason why maybe school districts aren't getting the money they otherwise should be, and so that's very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Ms. Sullivan-Wisecup?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for coming out today. I know I spoke to you about school funding before because I am very, very big about it being unconstitutional in the state of Ohio. I will say that the homestead, I didn't realize till after my, my parents had just moved into a new house on the other side of Springdale, moved all the way to the other side of Route 4, and they, when they moved, I said something to my mom about the homestead because back when I was doing the levies when my kids were younger, that was how we got a lot of the older voters to vote for levies was saying, "Well, have you, do you have the homestead tax exempt because you won't be affected by this?" When we built the new building, the new high school, junior high, that was our huge thing, was the homestead exemption. In order to get people to vote through that, we also, at the same time, were talking about how unconstitutional our funding was in the first place. Is there any way that that, that the homestead, it used to just be if you were 65 or older and owned a home and lived in it, that you got it just to be, in case, you know, everybody didn't understand, that was the only thing you had to be? Is there any way that the state of Ohio is talking about changing that back to where they don't have that? The income rule in there? Because that does outlaw, that makes it so that a lot of people, especially in Springdale and areas around here, don't get to take advantage of the homestead because of that? Is there any talk of that? Do you know anything about that?
Yeah, so, last GA, I'll speak from experience because I did spend four months in that General Assembly before I left. We had no less than 14 bills to address the property tax situation. A lot of different bites at the apple, right? To try to fix a myriad of different things, to try to help folks out. Two of those bills addressed the homestead exemption. Unfortunately, one of those bills, I believe, only got one hearing, and I don't think the other one got a hearing at all. So, they're just not being prioritized and they're not being moved through the proper legislative process. They're not even, you know, if you introduce a piece of legislation and it doesn't even get discussed in committee, you know, you can't have a full discussion about what works and what doesn't work and what we can advance and what we should be putting on the floor to vote on if it can't even get through committee. So, that's the unfortunate piece of our state legislature. They're just not taking it seriously enough to move these bills through the property or through the proper legislative process. We created in the biennium budget before last, a property tax review council, so a new committee we created, if you will, via a budget amendment that we got into the budget at that time, and that committee has done a lot of work. It heard thousands of hours of testimony. Associations like mine, the County Auditors Association, and so many more came up to testify to highlight what the issues are in the formula, in the property tax process itself, and it hasn't come up with any solutions yet. It released a very, very long report that I haven't had time to dive into, but it doesn't point back to any one piece of legislation that had already been introduced. So, I think it's lacking not only the prioritization, but the attention that this issue deserves on so many different levels. So, you're right, the homestead exemption was great when it was just, you have to be 65 and that's the only qualification. Now that the income qualification exists, it makes it an unnecessary barrier for folks to reach that exemption and to qualify for that benefit. Mm-hmm?
All right, I don't see any more questions. Thank you again for coming out and sharing with us the auditor's role in our community. We do appreciate you educating us.
Yes, and hey, just like when I was your state rep, open-door policy, you can contact me anytime. Thank you all.
And you're more than welcome to stay as we do that local legislative work. We're going to be talking about some exciting stuff, but we understand if you have more pressing business, we won't take it personally. All right, moving on with our agenda, we, next on the agenda is Committeeing Official Reports. First up is Civil Service Commission. I believe Mr. Coleman is out and Ms. Morgan's giving that update. Ms. Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Unfortunately, Mr. Coleman was unable to attend this evening, so I will attempt to fill in as best as I can. So, the Civil Service Commission met on February 6th. All members of the commission were present. At that meeting, the election of officers were held with Mr. Coleman continuing on in the role of president, Mrs. Kathy McNear as vice president, and Mrs. Cheryl Darby as secretary. Also at the meeting, Mrs. Darby submitted her letter of retirement notifying us that her last Civil Service Commission meeting will be the April meeting. The minutes of the January 2nd, 2025, meeting were approved 3 to 0. We also had updates on several hiring processes provided by Human Resources Administrator Renetta Edwards. We had new employees for the positions of building inspector, public works inspector, and police clerk that had either started already or were scheduled to start their employment with the city. Also, the position of facilities and grounds superintendent was filled by the current parks maintenance supervisor, Jason Waxman. As a result, the commission authorized an internal hiring process to fill the parks maintenance supervisor vacancy. That process is ongoing at this time. The next meeting is scheduled for March 6th at 2:00 PM adjacent to these chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. And do you know offhand if that vacancy that's coming, is that a council appointment vacancy or a mayor appointment? Do you know offhand? I didn't. It's a council appointment? I thought it was. Okay, so we'll make sure we track that and get that covered. So, April is the last meeting?
Correct.
All right, so council, you heard that, we need to be thinking about names for that replacement. All right, thank you. All right, next up, roles in law, Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
Finance Committee, Mr. Van Nuys out. Ms. Webster, do you have an update?
Thank you, no report.
All right, next is Planning Commission. Ms. Sullivan-Wisecup?
Thank you, Mr. President. Planning Commission met on February 11th. We had six people in attendance. We had ICM Ventures Dual-Use Dispensary, PUD major modification at 925 East Kemper Road. Both myself and Ms. McFarland found this to be a major modification. They would like to build a dual-use marijuana, dual-use dispensary. It would be a new build with a drive-through, and they didn't have all of the information that we needed, so they requested that we table it and continue it to the next meeting so that passed 6 to 0. We will be hearing that and a, we will have a public hearing on that as well at the next meeting. And then, we had Sam's Fuel Station, PUD minor modification at 800 Kemper Commons, and this had come up before, quite a few years ago, where Sam's had come and asked for fuel pumps, and we had approved it then, and then it didn't happen. And they came back now, they are changing all of their Sam's to now have fuel pumps there, and so they are actually planning on going forward with it this time. We passed it to 6 to 0, and I asked them when they will be starting. They said spring to summer of this year, so look to see that coming soon. And that, then we finally had a thoroughfare minor project that Mr. Riggs had come to us with. We had seen it the month before, as I told you last month, he had gone through it, and there were just a couple of changes, so he just went over the changes that have been made, and we were all very happy with it, and I believe that will be coming to council soon. And that is everything that I have, unless Ms. McFarland has anything to add or any questions. Thanks.
Don't say any, but I can tell you, if I had a dollar for every time somebody asked me what was being built in the Sam's lot or between the U-Haul and the storage building, we could probably close the school funding gap.
Well, I said, when they came, we were talking about different things, and I said that the one thing that I've been asked since the fuel pump discussion had happened is that there hasn't probably been one single month since that someone hasn't asked me about the fuel pumps, and then when they started working on the U-Haul, people are asking me, "Is that the fuel pumps?" So, the fuel pumps are coming soon.
Thank you for that report. All right, next up, we have Board of Zoned Appeals, Mr. Gleaves.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Board of Zoning Appeals met in these chambers, January 28th at 7:00 PM. All were in attendance. We had a public hearing, BGA application 20240643, TECO tax signs variants at 284 Northland Boulevard. The property owners were requesting the following variances. Number one, to allow wall-mounted sign without channel-cut letters in violation of zoning code, section 153 dot 4592D, which requires all wall-mounted signs to be channel-cut letters. That was defeated. And number two was to allow a total number of 108 square feet of wall signage, where 52.22 square feet is the maximum permitted per section 153 dot 4592A. That was also defeated. One thing I want to mention about this, this is up on a strip in Northland Boulevard, and I passed out up on the dais, a letter that was addressed to the Board of Zoning Appeals for Rich Ellison, Building Inspector. This incident here, or this application, brought forth the building department to go up to the Old Cape Plaza and look for basically anything that had been, I would say, not in compliance. And so, out of that came a lot of cases that are still pending and some of them being resolved, and I'd just like to thank Melissa Hayes and the building department for their transparency and also for the communication with the Board of Zoning Appeals. That makes our job a lot easier, and it really helped out in this case. So, if there's any questions, that's all I have.
Don't see any, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, Board of Health, Ms. McFarland.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Board of Health met on February 13th. The health commissioners' report included some updates on food programs, the GOCO, where Shell and Duncan is complete, construction on Wawa is continuing. The environmental health department has been working hard checking parking lots for illegal sales of food. That has been a continued issue lately. The health department staff has been continuing their emergency- The health department staff has been continuing their emergency preparedness training. We continue with our 10 spring interns. Six are UC students that are interning with the Board of, or the health department. Three are conducting their practicum, and one is helping to implement the new EMR or electronical medical record that the health department will start using. We did get an update on that. They are using e-clinical works. So as of right now, the health department and the nurses that do immunizations and see residents in the community are still using pen and paper. So the, March 3rd is the launch, and everybody will receive two days of training. Residents will actually be able to come in to make appointments. There will, there will be iPads in the lobby where they will sign in, just like you do at a doctor's office. So that should make their functions a lot easier and save them a lot of time. They are also working on a mental health improvement plan, which we should have some more information coming soon. And as far as public health nurses report, COVID cases and flu are definitely up, and I've been told that they're up even more in February. Obviously, I think we all know somebody that's been sick lately. Their immunization clinics saw 27 people with 104 vaccines given, and they have continued with their three routine home visit clients, and have actually picked up two additional clients. So I think that's all.
I don't see any questions, thank you. Next, cap on improvements, Ms. Sullivan-Wisecup.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
All right, next for the OKI report. OKI Board of Directors did meet on February 13th. There's two items I wanted to share with council. The first, at the beginning of the meeting, there was a discussion about the impact of a lot of the work coming out of the executive grants in DC right now. There were a number of executive orders that were issued that have a direct effect on our community. They're still awaiting guidance from the NTSB and other regulatory agencies at the federal level, but I can tell you what they shared so far is that this will have an effect on Springdale and our ability to get OKI awards in the near term. We have an extensive, part of the scoring that happens when we get those projects, there's components inside of that that affect the, the environmental impact and the community impact. Sometimes this is falls under the DEI umbrella. Springdale historically has scored very well in those categories, and it's helped us receive funding that we, that we use to make some of our projects possible. The guidance we have right now is with those being removed, we can expect that to be more difficult for Springdale going forward in the near term. So there's more that'll be coming on that as we reevaluate the scoring, but just wanted to share that early take that was shared at the OKI meeting. The second thing I wanted to share is a new program OKI is rolling out, and it's for, it's a new thing that OKI has been able to do grants for, and that's for street repaving. Historically, those projects have not been eligible or run through OKI. There's a new pilot program for repaving with an $800,000 max. It's for simple resurfacing projects. There's $10 million set aside for Ohio, and it's expected to go very quickly. So if there's a project that might fit those criteria, we're encouraged to apply for it. It has to be, it's three-inch depth. It has to be a classified collector or higher, which should mean something to our friend and city engineer, so there's limited roads that will qualify. There's additional criteria available on that, but it's something that is a new project that'll be pretty popular. So if there's something that fits in that, we're encouraged to go ahead and apply soon. And that's all I have for OKI, unless there's any questions. All right, next we'll move on to the mayor's report. Mayor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things briefly. March 26th, March 26th at 7:00 PM at the rec center by the State of the City address. Residents will feel free to come out. You'll get to hear from all of the department heads, and you'll also have the opportunity to speak with them freely when we conclude that, that presentation. So encourage folks to come out and hear some information about what's going on in the city and what to expect in 2025. Second thing is, we had referenced this in our last meeting in February. Want all residents, but particularly residents in Beacon Hills and particularly residents that are on Bridgeport, be aware, and there's a, going to be a meeting in Forest Park City Council on March the 3rd. Not sure of the time exactly, because they may be doing a public hearing before the regular council meeting, but please, please, please keep monitoring that and please come out to that, as that development over there at Forest Fair Mall is still in the process of going through. Their most recent renderings, as discussed previously, are three very large industrial-sized buildings comparable to what we have over in Commerce Park or comparable to what we have over by Showcase Cinemas that are going to be very, very close to our residents that are right there on Bridgeport. So just be aware of that. Please come out, be proactive. Got to try to influence the situation before all these plans are approved and the things are put in place, because then it'll be too late. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hawkins. And to add to that, I, I was, I'm also very concerned about the Forest Park development that's going on between that and Fairfield. I attended the Fairfield Planning Committee meeting to listen to the feedback that they were given there, and I was at the last Forest Park City Council meeting to hear the discussion because they had the first reading of the ordinance for that. What I personally found troubling is that they're moving away from a PUD or planned unit development and moving just to open industrial zoning, which has much less restrictions. So when Mayor Hawkins says, you know, this is the time to make comments or make change, this is really the only opportunity for them to put restrictions on that development because one, it's not a planning development. If it passes, it'll be just whatever follows inside the industrial zoning requirements for Forest Park. So we're still looking into what we can do and how we can protect our residents. I have been, I, I know Mayor Hawkins has shared in the past that we have in good dialogue with our partners and our neighbors in Forest Park, but it, it is something that is a real concern for that, that part of the neighborhood. I know I've certainly heard from several residents that are along that border, and they're very concerned about it. All right. Move on to the administrator's report, Mr. Yul.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick update. Unfortunately, Mike Huxell submitted his resignation as our public works director. He has accepted a job with Westchester Township to be their community services director. So it's a good opportunity for Mike. It's a larger department. He'll oversee probably three times the amount of people and a couple other facets that he doesn't currently supervise here within the city. But we wish him well, and again, it's a good opportunity. He was very torn about taking this position. He really loves the position he's established here in the city of Springdale, but, but we wish Mike well in his, his new endeavors. So we are currently looking for a new public works director. If anyone is interested and/or knows of someone, please feel free to submit a resume. Secondly, I have a, as you may have witnessed tonight, there's a couple cybersecurity enhancements that are going on within the, the city technology infrastructure. One of those being a domain change to springdaleohio.gov. Last summer, there was a big push to kind of migrate municipalities to a .gov away from a .com or a .org to strengthen their abilities to, to recognize the domain as a municipality. So we have kind of started down that path, and some of the emails you may notice are having some, a little bit of flutter. That process started over the weekend, and he's, next step has been slowly migrating over different banks of email accounts. So apologies for not letting you know in advance. I wasn't, I was unaware until this evening that your emails were, were impacted, so. But with that, there'll be more to come here about how that will, will change over and what will be impacted here in a couple weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yul. On the email cut over, when you say that it's impacted, we're not expecting any lost emails, it's just right now we're not able to access the system, correct? It's not, we're not saying that we've lost any documents.
Correct, no, we haven't lost any documents. It's just a transition, and your, your ., your springdale.org email account will work for the next 18 months. Anytime you receive a, an email, it will automatically feed to your springdaleohio.gov email, so your reply emails will bear that domain address. But like I said, the next 18 months will be seamless for the old .org, and when I say seamless, and Mr. Anderson knows, technology is not always seamless, but we're, we're hoping this will be a smoother transition here in the next couple, couple days, so.
Thank you. And the reason for the call is if, if people in the audience or in the city have not received an email where they would have expected one, just keep that in mind. You might need to resend it or reach out through a different mechanism over the next couple days. All right, Mr. Gleaves, did you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Yul, who will be taking over Mr. Huxell's assignments since he's leaving?
In the short term, our Assistant Public Works Director, Chris Miller, will be manning the helm until we find a suitable replacement.
Thank you.
Have we reached out to Mr. Agarcola, see if he's tired of retirement?
I, I think he's enjoying his retirement.
That's a shame. All right, we'll move on to the law director's report, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report tonight.
Engineer's report, Mr. Riggs.
Thank you. Just got a, two brief things here. We got the East Kemper Improvements Phase One, that's the sort of funded project. We actually began survey late January. The snow on the ground really held us back. We're still trying to wrap that up, the fieldwork at least by the end of the month, so we'll probably have updated base mapping and everything in early March. And I've already started to reach out to the utilities to let them know about the project and begin coordination with them. Then the other project, the Northland Kemper Intersection Improvement and Shared Use Path, that's, that's on the other side of Kemper. We had a scoping meeting with ODOT on January 22nd. We submitted a proposal to Public Works last week, Friday afternoon, actually, and that's probably going to go before you guys sometime next month, and maybe the second meeting, if that's right. And that's all I had.
All right, don't see any questions, thank you. Next, the Rental Program Committee. I don't know if Ms. Sullivan-Wisecup had anything. It's possible Mr. Vanover had sent me an email about this. I know with him being absent, but I don't have a report from him. I will say, though, that later tonight, we do have ordinance and a pair of ordinances related to street directions, so we can talk about those then, but that came out of the Rental Program Committee. That's the work from there. So we'll have to follow back up with Mr. Vanover to see if there's additional data he wanted to share. All right, next, the Urban Farming Special Committee, Ms. McFarland.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
All right, that's it for Committee and Official Reports. Next, we'll move on to Communications for Council. Ms. Browder, any Council, Communications for Council this evening?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we do have another TRACs Economic Development Transfer Form that the city has received for Rite Aid, and I'll defer to Mr. Yul for more information.
Mr. Yul.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Mrs. Browder indicated, QuickTrip has filed for a liquor permit transfer, and this is just for their application to submit to the state. It doesn't grant them an application or a permit. It just merely says we're not objecting to their request for a permit.
All right, so council, this is just like the other TRACs. If you have any questions about it or concerns, this is your chance to raise them. Not seeing any, go ahead and file. Thank you. All right, that's it for Communications. Next up is Communications in the Audience. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience that would like to address council for any reason. You'd have up to five minutes to speak to us. You simply need to come to the podium, state your name and address, sign in at the podium, and then you can address us. At this point, Communications in the Audience is now open. Second call. Third and final call. All right, at this point, I'm closing Communications in the Audience, and we'll move on to Ordinances and Resolutions. First up, we have ordinance number 6, 2025. This is a second reading. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Ordinance number 6, 2025, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission for use of funding through the Mini Planning Grant Program to complete the Mill Creek Connector feasibility study. Whereas the city of Springdale, the city is exploring the feasibility and cost of extending pedestrian and bike facilities from Northland Boulevard to Springfield Pike to connect with surrounding trails, specifically the Glenwood Gardens to Wynton Woods Connector Trail, the study. And whereas in furtherance of the study, the city applied for and received grant funding from the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission Mini Planning Grant Program in the amount of $15,000 towards the cost of the study. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1, that the mayor and city administrator are hereby authorized to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission to accept funding through the Mini Planning Grant Program for completion of the Mill Creek Connector feasibility study, the memorandum. A copy of the memorandum is attached as exhibited and incorporated herein by reference. Section 2, council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121 dot 22 of the Ohio Revise Code. Section 3, that this ordinance will take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Counsel, you've heard the reading of ordinance number 6, 2025. It is a second reading and can be acted on tonight. What is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, the motion made by Ms. Sullivan-Wisecup, and I heard the second from Mr. Jacobs. Questions or discussion? Ms. Webster? Okay. All right. Don't see any lights? Ms. Browder, if you poll council.
Ms. Sullivan-Wisecup?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Gleaves?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Ordinance number 6, 2025 passes with six affirmative votes. Next, we'll move on to ordinance number 7, 2025. This is a second reading. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Ordinance number 7, 2025, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement with Jake Sweeney Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram for the purchase of two 2024 Dodge Durango Police Pursuit Vehicles. Whereas the state of Ohio has advertised and received bids for the purchase of vehicles, and whereas Jake Sweeney Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram is equal to or less than the best bidder with a price of $87,400 for the purchase of two 2024 Dodge Durango Police Pursuit Vehicles. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1, that the city of Springdale accepts the state's vehicle specifications and agrees that Jake Sweeney Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram is equal to or less than the best bidder for purchase. Section 2, that the mayor and city administrator are hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with Jake Sweeney Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram in the amount of $87,400 for the purchase of two 2024 Dodge Durango Police Pursuit Vehicles for use by the city of Springdale Police Department. Section 3, that the finance officer tax commissioner is hereby authorized to pay Jake Sweeney Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram a sum not to exceed $87,400 for the purchase of two 2024 Dodge Durango Police Pursuit Vehicles. Section 4, council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121 dot 22 of the Ohio Revise Code. Section 5, that this ordinance will take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Counsel, you've heard the reading of ordinance number 7, 2025. It is a second reading and can be acted on tonight. What is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved to second, any questions or discussion? All right, scene done. Ms. Browder, if you poll council.
Ms. Sullivan-Wisecup?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Gleaves?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Ordinance number 7, 2025 passes with six affirmative votes. All right, council, next up on our agenda is ordinance number 8, 2025. This is just the first reading. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Ordinance number 8, 2025, an ordinance to establish Castro Lane as a one-way street between Benedictia Road and Ledro Street. Whereas the Council of the City of Springdale, Ohio is committed to ensuring the safety and efficiency of vehicular and pedestrian traffic within the city, and whereas changes to the flow of traffic on Castro Lane were discussed and reviewed by the Rental Program Committee established by council, and whereas after a comprehensive traffic study and input from traffic engineers, it has been determined that converting Castro Lane into a one-way street will improve traffic flow and safety conditions, and whereas the conversion of Castro Lane to a one-way street is in the interests of public safety, pedestrian accessibility, and overall traffic management of the city. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1, Castro Lane shall be designated as a one-way street in the westbound direction between Benedictia Road and Ledro Street effective upon the installation of appropriate signage and traffic control devices. Section 2, the Department of Public Works is hereby authorized to install all necessary signage and road markings to implement this change in the direction of traffic on this street. Section 3, any vehicles traveling in a direction contrary to the designated one-way direction shall be subject to penalties as prescribed in the city's municipal code. Section 4, council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121 dot 22 of the Ohio Revise Code. Section 5, this ordinance will take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Counsel, you've heard the first reading of ordinance number 8, 2025. Are there any questions regarding this this evening? I will start out and just give a little bit of background, as you may recall, the Rental Program Committee, when Mr. Vanover was speaking to it over several meetings, talked about the need to address parking and traffic concerns in this area of town. While we were doing that work, we found, as part of the traffic study, one of the major findings was issues in terms of public safety with the amount of parking even on the street, that from the study, we found that there were a number of parking spaces that really needed to be blocked off for Ohio law. So in looking at that, we realized that by looking at the traffic problem, we found a problem that would make parking even worse. So one of the things the Rental Program Committee did was try to come up with ideas or ways to soften that blow. So instead of improving parking, we actually would be making it worse. By changing a one-way street, at least for the two sections we're hearing, we would not have to remove as many parking spaces on the street, and the belief is that that might also improve some of the congestion and safety issues. You often hear residents being concerned about traffic coming from both ways and not having room to bail out and let the other car through. So, I don't want to steal too much of Mr. Vanover's thunder on this ordinance and the next one, he was really the one spearheading this change for the district he represents. So I'll leave it there, but I will tell you in terms of discussion for this, this one and the next one for tonight, if there's any questions, let's certainly get them out there, so that Mr. Vanover would have a chance, or Administration would have a chance to look into it. So if they have any questions, this is a good time. I will also say that there is a public hearing that is attached to both this and the next ordinance, that's scheduled for our next meeting, and the residents in that area are being notified of the potential change. So just be on the lookout, if you see them, make sure they're aware of it, because it is a meaningful change to switch to a one-way street in that area. Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd spoken to Councilmember Vanover as well, I was asking about how exactly we are going to make sure the residents are informed, this is a very significant change. Besides mailers, will there be any other outreach that we know of?
Mr. Yule.
And it can be saved, of course, for the next meeting as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Works is preparing a mailer, they also intend on going out to the different areas to survey to see if any additional spots need to be taken, so we can take that into consideration, but we'll also publicize it on our Facebook page and also on the website.
I will say, there was a lot of discussion in the committee about this, if you, Council, in your packet, you should have gotten the actual engineering study that was done by tech, that had a number of different options that could be looked at, and I can tell you, it wasn't obvious to the committee either if this was the right thing to do or not. So please take a hard look at what these mean, and what it would mean to the community, because I don't think this is an obvious change to make. If you have concerns about them, please do speak up, I know Mr. Vanover would want to be able to address them. Ms. Sullivan-Wisecup.
Thank you, Mr. President, I do want to point out that in our rental meetings, that it was said that, I think it was about 20 parking spaces on each of the streets, both Castro and Ledro would have to be eliminated if we weren't to go with the one-way, and that was, for me personally, that was my main thing, was that I didn't want to put the residents at a disadvantage for parking with taking away 40 spots in a two-street, you know, length. So, just to kind of have that in mind as you're thinking if you want to pass this or not, if that is what the alternate is.
But this is one of those cases where we definitely do want that community feedback, if you know people in that area, if this is for them to improve their situation, if they don't think it's going to help, it's certainly something that we will hear, we're here for that. All right, seeing nothing else on ordinance number eight, let's move on to Ordinance Number 9, 2025, Mr. Jacobs, this is a first reading.
Ordinance Number 9, 2025, an ordinance to establish Ledro Street as a one-way street. Whereas the Council of City of Springdale, Ohio is committed to ensuring the safety and efficiency of vehicular and pedestrian traffic within the city, and whereas changes to the flow of traffic on Ledro Street were discussed and reviewed by the Rental Program Committee established by Council, and whereas after a comprehensive traffic study and input from traffic engineers, it has been determined that converting Ledro Street into a one-way street will improve traffic flow and safety conditions, and whereas the conversion of Ledro Street to a one-way street is in the interest of public safety, pedestrian accessibility, and overall traffic management of the city. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of City of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1, Ledro Street shall be designated as a one-way street in the counterclockwise direction in its entirety effective upon the installation of appropriate signage and traffic control devices. Section 2, the Department of Public Works is hereby authorized to install all nearby necessary signage and road markings to implement this change. Section 3, any vehicles traveling in a direction contrary to the designated one-way direction shall be subject to penalties as prescribed in the city's municipal code. Section 4, council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revise Code. Section 5, that this ordinance shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Council, you've heard the first reading of Ordinance Number 9, 2025, are there any questions or discussion on this one this evening? All right, seen none, we will see both these ordinances at our next meeting, and again, please do take time to look over the report that came out, there's a lot of very good detailed information in there about why and what the change would do. All right, next we'll move on to Resolution Number 7, 2025, Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Resolution 7, 2025, a resolution opposing Senate Bill 56, which would change the method by which the state of Ohio distributes marijuana excise tax funds resulting in economic harm to the city of Springdale, Ohio. Whereas Senate Bill 56 has been introduced in the Ohio Senate, which, among other things, proposed to change the way in which marijuana excise tax funds are distributed by the state of Ohio, and whereas currently, a portion of marijuana excise tax funds are distributed to communities like Springdale that allowed marijuana dispensaries to locate here, and the proposed legislation would eliminate that and redirect the funds to the state of Ohio's General Fund. And whereas, Ohio cities like Springdale that permitted dispensaries to locate in their communities rely on the excise tax funds to cover costs associated with regulation of the businesses and public safety costs associated with them. And whereas, changing the method by which marijuana excise tax funds are distributed will result in economic harm to the city of Springdale and other similarly situated communities. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of City of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1, the city of Springdale City Council urges the Ohio General Assembly should not pass Senate Bill 56 or any legislation that would result in marijuana excise tax funds not being distributed directly back to municipalities like Springdale that permit marijuana dispensaries to operate in its jurisdiction. Section 2, council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revise Code. Section 3, this resolution shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Council, you've heard the reading of Resolution R. 7, 2025, what is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved in second, questions or discussion? I will tell you, since the numbers weren't in there, the current tax revenue is divided up, that 36% would go to cannabis, social equity, and jobs funds, and 36% of that tax revenue was originally, as of right now, designated to come to the host communities from the cannabis fund. 25% would go to substance abuse and addiction funds, and 3% is currently going to Division of Cannabis Control and Tax Commissioners Fund. So 36% of that tax, right now, was intended to come to Springdale for the dispensaries we've talked about, that we've licensed that would be coming to Springdale. The current House bill is just pulling the rug out from under us, and it's ridiculous. It's a complete tax grab, a bait and switch from the state, and I find it offensive. So, I certainly support Resolution R. 7, 2025, and hope that we can send a copy of it to our state representatives and anyone else that would need to hear, we're another community that's being wrongly affected. Recently, in the Cincinnati Business Carrier, there was a story about our county commissioners, and the council member or president from Anderson Township that has dispensers currently, that were also speaking out on this issue. I agree with them, this is completely inappropriate, especially in the first year of the program, while it's being stood up, while communities are counting on that tax to offset the costs to change it, it's ridiculous. Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would also encourage residents to reach out as well, what we're doing tonight is just speaking for council as a body, and as many calls as we can get from residents to their state officials, it would be beneficial, not to mention the school funding stuff that our auditor mentioned previously. Thank you.
All right, see no more lights, Ms. Browder, if you poll Council on Resolution R. 7, 2025.
Mrs. Sullivan-Wisecup?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Gleaves?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Resolution R. 7, 2025 passes with six affirmative votes. All right, that's it for ordinances and resolutions, now we'll move on to old business. We had one item of old business pre slated on our agenda, and that was a discussion around an ordinance Number 10, 2025. This is a new ordinance that was requested by a council member to be considered by council, it's listed under Old Business because it's not an ordinance that we're reading tonight. The reason it's here is to get council's direction and discussion, the request that I'm hearing from the council members, that we want to send this to planning for their consideration. So we're learning from our past process going through this, in this case, you have an ordinance that's simply changing the code for the domesticated pets from two to three, and it's that simple change that's being requested. I didn't know if, Mr. Gleaves, if you wanted to say anything else on that, since you had requested the change, or if you wanted me to go to the other questions.
Well, I just wanted to say that in the last council meeting, the mayor stated that you have to think about your neighbors, you know, it's a type of thing where it's not always about the owner itself, it's about your neighbor, and we've already recognized that people have more pets. So, in order to more people be in compliance, and for more people to understand that there is a number, there's a lot of people that don't even know that there is a number. So now that you do, you could adhere to the ordinance if they'd be, and I'd also like to refer to Mr. Jacobs, and some of the information that the committee had found, if I don't know if he wants to go back over that or not, if you would, please.
Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. President, just in general, to bring people up to speed, the Rules and Laws Committee met, the administrator and our law director had looked up other nearby communities, we didn't find any with a specific number, so we were an outlier in that sense. And just in general, when I speak to people about what I've been doing lately on council, and they hear that we have a two-pet rule, they're kind of taken aback by it, it is an outlier rule, that doesn't mean we shouldn't have it, we don't have to take our direction from other communities, but in general, Mr. Vanover and myself felt this is something that we could change without a major change happening to anybody's quality of life. It isn't really about the number of animals, it's about whether they create problems for the neighbors, and that could be one dog, that could be seven dogs, you could still have problems. And so, in general, our committee got the sense from Administration that they wouldn't have any enforcement issues, I don't want to speak for Administration directly on that, but the committee felt comfortable with adjusting the number, and of course, we also do need to send that to Planning Commission. Thank you.
Ms. McFarland.
Thank you, Mr. President, having been in charge of the Urban Farming Committee, and learning how that process goes, I definitely think it would be beneficial to go to planning, just the more feedback input that we can get from the trusted people that we have put in these positions would be very helpful. Personally, I have two dogs, I do know people, and I don't like the fact that we're saying we know it's out there and we're just letting it go. So I really think this is a little behind the times, I'm not sure if anybody knows the reasoning behind the limit, but if anybody ever figures out a way to treat cat allergies, I'll have a cat as well, so. Yeah, I definitely would like Planning's input, not just because I'm there, but those guys have been around for a long time, and they know a lot of stuff, so, thank you.
Thank you, and I do know that Mr. Gleaves had spoken with Mr. Ocom in planning to get his feedback in general for process, to make sure they wouldn't be surprised if we did send it down to them for their feedback, and I believe Mr. Ocom's reached out to the Law Director with questions about the best way to respond, and what that is, as we kind of figure out how we should be doing this most efficiently, after spearheading it the way you did with the Urban Farming Committee. All right, not seeing any other question lights, what would need to happen now is, I'm open to, what needs to happen is a motion would have to be made to send this ordinance to Planning for Review. Keep in mind, that motion, and even after it's voted on, if it is sent, that is not saying that you agree with the change, it's simply saying that you agree that they should look at it and give feedback. So, with that knowing that, the chair is now open for a motion to send Ordinance Number 10, 2025 to Planning for Consideration.
I'd like to put, to send it to Planning for Consideration, to send Resolution, oh, sorry, Ordinance 10, 2025 to Planning for Consideration.
Moved in second, is there any questions or discussion about the motion to send Ordinance Number 10, 2025 to Planning for their review? All right, seen none, Ms. Browder, if you poll Council on the motion.
Mrs. Sullivan-Wisecup?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Gleaves?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. The motion to send Ordinance Number 10, 2025 to Planning for Consideration passes with five affirmative votes and one negative. All right, now on, is there any other old business that anyone on council would like to bring forward? Ms. Webster.
I want to know what you people are going to do the next time somebody comes up here and wants seven dogs. You are amending this or making this ordinance because of one person that came up here and asked about it. What about the other, excuse me, the other 11,000 that live in this city? Next time somebody will be up here and will want seven dogs, nine dogs, 10 dogs, then what are we going to do? Why do we change everything around for one person that comes up here? I expressed how I felt the last two meetings, really, and I heard about this coming on the agenda, that Mr. Gleaves wanted it. I don't see the reason to change the number, but evidently, everybody else does. Thank you.
So we finished with that agenda item, I do take your comment for, to answer one part of your question, though, the state of Ohio does have a limit of five, and we would have to be under that number regardless of what we decided at our local level. Is there any other new business or old business that anyone on council would like to bring forward? All right, seen none, we'll move on to new business, is there any new business anyone on council would like to bring forward? All right, seen none, we're in Meetings and Announcements. Ms. McFarland.
Thank you, Mr. President, first announcement, Board of Health will meet Thursday, March 13th in these chambers, and second, this is my last plug for the cinema horse races, they will be this Saturday at the rec center. Just to clarify, Mr. Anderson will be dealing cards, I believe Mr. Jacobs will be serving drinks, and I think I'm selling the betting tickets. So, there will be a lot of fun, a lot of races sponsored by some of our elected officials, so come out, it's a good time to support the Springdale Youth Boosters and the kids that play sports. Thank you.
And I will say, that SYB event is fantastic, if anyone hasn't been there, I encourage you to do it, in terms of community and fun, it's really something. Ms. Sullivan-Wisecup.
Thank you, Mr. President, Planning Commission will meet on Tuesday, March 11th, in these chambers at 7:00 PM.
Mr. Yule.
Thank you, Mr. President, just a quick announcement for council, I emailed the thoroughfare plan right before the meeting started today, so hopefully that will be appearing in your inbox here relatively soon, but for anyone who would like a printed copy, please let me know, and I will have it before the next meeting. It's not set for the agenda until March 19th, and Mr. Riggs will do a brief presentation that evening as well on the thoroughfare plan, so, but if you want a printed copy, let me know, I'll get that for you in advance.
Thank you, Mr. Gleaves.
Thank you, Mr. President, Board of Zoning Appeals meeting for February 12th, I found out, today has been canceled due to no application filed. Thank you.
Any other meetings and announcements? All right, that's it for that, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item, which is Communications in the Audience, this is your second opportunity and final one for the evening, to speak to council for any matter you would like, you'd have up to five minutes to speak, you simply need to come forward to the podium, state your name and address, please sign in, and then you can start.
Hi, my name is Riee Haratsika, you guys might know me as Ray Brabs, I'm actually here to compliment the Springdale Police Force. If you can't tell by my real name, I am not all the way white. I was not born in this country, although I wasn't born a citizen, and this attack on Amendment 14 affects me directly. I got pulled over, and Officer, I'm probably going to butcher his name, and I do feel bad, DeStefano was very kind, I think he could tell that I was nervous, I was on my way to work, and I just really appreciate that kindness, and he was wrong, I could renew my tags online, even though it was late and past my birthday. I could renew my tags online, even though it was late and past my birthday. And there was another officer, I don't know her name. We were driving, she was trying to get my attention just to let me know about my plates, and I really do appreciate that. She was kind. I don't know her name because we're both sitting in cars, but she was kind. So, and then that juxtapos, why am I trying to get these big words right now? With that being said, I would like to talk about Evendale Police Department and their response to the Nazis that were on the highway right next to Lincoln Heights. They could have stopped it. I'm not going to go in to say that the guy that followed them to Loughlin was racist. I watched the whole video. I mean, he called them losers. I guess that's a good thing. I mean, bare minimum, but it's good. But when I was watching the video, I noticed a lot of police talking about how they didn't know what the law was. They were refusing to follow their chief's direct orders on telling them to take down those signs. When I was doing my Googling, I found one law that Attorney General Yost liked to use. Hold on, let me pull it back up. They could have used Ohio Revised Code Three Seven Six One Point Twelve, which makes it a felony to, wait. Crap, I got the wrong part. But basically, they could have been unmasked. The Nazis could have been unmasked, and that could have helped stop the whole thing. I've pulled up other regulations and everything else like that. Now, I'm just bringing this up to you guys because the Nazis are coming here eventually. They've got too close to home, and I mean, I look around, I would hope that none of you guys like Nazis and can understand why you scared everybody, like me, like others around here, and how serious that threat was to us. They were too close to home. They were right next to elementary schools and just, sorry. What I'm asking is for Springdale Police Force to be prepared. I don't want any violence either, and I do respect everybody's First Amendment right to freedom of speech and protest, but that was basically, to me, it felt like a terrorist attack. I've heard stories, I've seen witnesses, I've actually gone down to Lincoln Heights and just talked to the people, tried to bring them food when I can afford to, just to show them that I support them. I'm just asking Springdale to try and take a step ahead, so that way we can combat this and be prepared. Because like I said, what I saw in those videos, those body cams, those officers don't know how to do their job. Now, Springdale might, well, Springdale does. I gave an example of that, and I just, I just hope you guys, I don't even know how I want to end it, but just please keep us safe, do your job. Sorry, I don't want to talk anymore, I'm just telling the rest of us.
That's fine, Ms. Raye. I will tell you that we have had conversations on the back end. I know I spoke with Mayor Hawkins after the incident to see what we could do. I spoke with Mr. Yule to, for me to better understand how prepared our police are to deal with situations like this, and I know that those conversations will continue. Anytime situations like that come up, it is a good opportunity for us that weren't directly involved in it to take a look and say, how would we react in that? Are we prepared for it? I was at the Lincoln Heights, I'm sorry, at the Lincoln Heights Town Hall after the event, and I heard very powerful testimony on the community impacts of that, and it changed me. I mean, it just changed me to the core, hearing how the community reacted and rallied around and were affected by that. Equally, I was impressed, and I continue to be impressed, with our city's police department, the professionalism, the preparedness that they show. So I appreciate you calling out, it may be happening somewhere else, but it could happen here, and it's irresponsible for us not to think about what that can do. So there's certainly two things that have happened, at least that I've been a part of, since that event occurred. I know myself, I know Mayor Hawkins was at the Lincoln Heights Town Hall, Mr. Gleaves was there, I was also at the Evendale Council one after that. Understanding what's happening in other communities is part of our job, too, and I appreciate you holding us accountable for that. I feel like they would get a different type of reaction here. I think we're prepared for that. It's not that I'm inviting that here. I don't believe hate has a place in our community, but I'd like to think that we will take it as a lesson. I don't know if anyone else wants to address it, but thank you for calling it out. It is something that's affected our community, and what I told the mayor of Lincoln Heights is that hate isn't respecting community boundaries, so community shouldn't either. So maybe it happened in that jurisdiction, but we can still be there for our neighbors. So thank you. All right, the floor is still open for communications to the audience, if anyone else would like to address council. Second call. Third and final call. All right, I'm closing communications in the audience. Next, we'll move on to Mr. Jacobs for a recap of legislative items and legislation still in development.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you review your legislative summary, council, Item One was addressed by Ordinance Six, Twenty Twenty-Five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission for use of funding through the Mini Planning Grant Program to complete the Milk Creek Connector feasibility study. That passed with six affirmative votes. Item Two was addressed by Ordinance Seven, Twenty Twenty-Five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement with Jake Sweeney Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram for the purchase of two Twenty Twenty Four Dodge Durango police pursuit vehicles. That passed with six affirmative votes. Item Three was addressed by Ordinances Eight, Twenty Twenty-Five, and Ordinance Nine, Twenty Twenty-Five, both receiving a first reading, two separate ordinances to establish Ledro Street and Castro Lane between Benadere Road and Ledro Street as one-way streets, and as noted, there'll be a public hearing at our next meeting. Item Four was addressed by Resolution Seven, Twenty Twenty-Five, a resolution opposing Senate Bill Fifty-Six, which would change the method by which the state of Ohio distributes marijuana excise tax funds resulting in economic harm to the city of Springdale, Ohio. That passed with six affirmative votes. Item Five was addressed, received a first reading, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator, no, I'm sorry, it did not receive first reading, it will at our next meeting, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement with Verdantas for Design Engineering for the Northland Boulevard and Kemper Road Intersection Modifications and Shared Youth Path Project. Item Six will receive a first reading at our next meeting, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement for Design Engineering for the Community Center HVAC Replacement Project Phase Two. And Item Seven, two separate ordinance authorizing agreements for Crack Seal and Cape Seal Project and Pavement Rejuvenator Project as part of the Twenty Twenty Five Annual Street Program will receive a first reading at our next meeting. All other matters are forthcoming unless the administration has anything.
All right, not seeing anything else. Last thing we have on our agenda is Item Seventeen.
Move to adjourn.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.